Thanks, Brandon. There's our notification. Good evening, everyone. It is Wednesday, August the 13th, 2025. I now call this regularly scheduled virtual meeting of the Aurora Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I'll now call the role of Commissioners. Commissioner Jacek.
Present.
Commissioner Bush.
Present.
Commissioner Geyser.
Present.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Banka.
Present.
Commissioner Hogan.
Present.
And Commissioner Walls is also present. We've established a voting quorum this evening. The plea of allegiance will not be said tonight, as this meeting is virtual. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from July the 23rd, 2025. Everyone received a draft of those minutes, so you all have an opportunity to review them. Okay, are there any amendments or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the Chair moves to approve the minutes as presented without objection. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Banka. It's been moved in seconded to approve the minutes as presented without objection. Any discussion on the motion to approve without objection? Okay, is there any objection? The minutes from the 23rd will be approved. Tonight, we have three items of general business, items 8A through 8C. The Chair moves to approve the agendas presented without objection. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. It's been moved in seconded to approve the agenda as presented without objection. Is there any discussion on the motion? Without discussion, is there any objection? Okay. I will now read a summary of our policies and procedures for this evening's meeting. Please make sure your home or computer microphone is unmute unless you're speaking. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is a quasi-judicial hearing. There is no swearing in of those who will give testimony, but it is presumed that all parties are telling the truth. When addressing the Commission as an applicant or their representative, please state your first and last name, as well as the organization that you're representing, and you may additionally state if you are an Aurora resident. If you are addressing the Commission as a member of the general public for public testimony, please state your first and last name, and if you are an Aurora resident. For each agenda item, there will be an initial presentation by city staff. Afterward, Commissioners may ask questions of staff. Discussion of agenda items by Commissioners will only be conducted following a motion and a second. Following the staff presentation, the applicant or the representative may choose to make a presentation or answer questions. The applicant will have 10 minutes for their presentation. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant. Members of the public that have signed up to speak will each have three minutes to speak on the agenda item during this public comment period. It is asked that only new information be presented. The same arguments should not be repeated. Commissioners may ask questions of the public following their comments. After public comments, the applicant will have five minutes to address any public comments. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant. The Chair will ensure all Commissioners have no further questions of the applicant or staff. The Chair will then call for the question. After a motion has been made and seconded, the Commissioners will then discuss the case amongst themselves. After the discussion, the Chair will call the question. Commissioners are finders of fact and will vote based on their evaluation of the evidence presented, as compared to Code Section 146. All rulings of the Planning and Zoning Commission are normally final. Exclusions are zoning map amendments, zoning code amendments, and comprehensive plan amendments that need City Council approval. Decisions by the Commission can be appealed to City Council by presenting a written appeal to the City Manager within 10 calendar days of the public hearing. City Council also has the discretion to call up any case whether an appeal has been made or not. Notices for this virtual meeting were published, posted to the city website, and the development projects were posted with signs on the properties. Notices were also mailed to adjacent landowners per city requirements. Without consent agenda, we will move directly to our first case this evening, which is Agenda Item 8A. Recording for the minutes, Commissioner Site Visits. Commissioner Jacek, Commissioner Banka, Commissioner Riley, Commissioner Geyser, Commissioner Hogan, Commissioner Bush, and Commissioner Walls. Agenda Item 8A is the King Auto Conditional Use located in Ward 4. Case manager this evening is Ani Karabashian, the applicant, King Auto. Ani, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner Walls. Good evening, everyone. Let me get my slides ready. Okay, great. So, the applicant is requesting a conditional use approval for automobile and light truck sales and rentals in the MUC Zone District. The location of the proposed project is on 2180 South Havana Street. The applicant is King Auto. The property is within the MUC Zone District. The overlay district is Havana Street Overlay, and the place type is City Corridor. This subject site, like I said before, is in the MUC Zone District. The surrounding properties directly adjacent from the site are also in MUC Zone District. There are residential properties southeast of the subject site, across Warren Avenue, that are within 300 feet of the property, which is why the project requires a conditional use approval. The project site is located at the corner of South Havana Street and East Warren Avenue. And then, this is just an aerial map of the site, just to give an overall view. The applicant is not making any external changes to the site or the existing building. There's motor vehicle repair, service, and rental operations are not proposed for this project. The applicant is not proposing any vehicle displays or elevated displays. There are two existing ADA parking spaces, which comply with the code requirements for this project. The applicant meets the requirements for the use-specific standards for automobile and light truck sales. Per discussions with the applicant, there will be customer parking along the west and southern portions of the property, employee parking along the northern portion of the property, with vehicle inventory parking behind the primary building and along the eastern property line. The three site photos on the screen show the western portion of the property facing Havana. As you can see, there is existing landscaping on the property. The applicant has agreed to maintain the existing landscaping throughout the site, as well as replace missing landscaping that is on the existing site plan. In addition, the applicant plans to make repairs to elements of the property that require maintenance on the site, including but not limited to repairing the existing fence on the northeast corner and the enclosure, the trash enclosure upon approval of the use. These are pictures of the property along Warren Avenue, which show the existing landscaping and also the southern facade of the existing building. And then, lastly, this is a view of the vehicle, or it's from the vehicle access on Warren Avenue. Here, you can see the parking lot on the eastern portion of the property, where the applicant plans to locate vehicle inventory and employee parking. The applicant stated in their letter of operations that the, the, um, in terms of the vehicle inventory, they anticipate starting with 15 vehicles on the property. Seven adjacent property owners and 15 registered neighborhood organizations were notified. A neighborhood meeting was not held. A notice of hearing boards and mailings were not posted, or notice of hearing boards and mailings were posted and sent, and no comments were received when notice of hearing boards are posted. However, there was one comment that was received against the project, and that comment was, um, received right before the Planning Committee Commission meeting on July 23rd. And they had concerns about having another car dealership on Havana Street, the impact of walkability, and concerns about interior, not having, the project not having interior repair capabilities on the site, even though there isn't any repair associated with this project. And in addition, there were two inquiries made about the project that were general in nature. For this project, there are two issues that were discussed during the development review, context and surrounding area, and the conditional use criteria. Here, this is a map of it, which is an overall representation of the commercial uses along Havana Street. It does not show all the businesses, but provides a visual summary of the area. With the property on Havana Street, it's surrounded by a variety of commercial uses, including restaurants, retail, a hotel, self-storage, as well as a variety of auto-oriented uses. It is, um, as I've mentioned before, east of the site is a residential neighborhood. This neighborhood has coexisted with the variety of commercial uses on the Havana Commercial Corridor for many years. And the conversion of this site from a restaurant to a car sales lot is not anticipated to change the character of the area. In addition, the property is located within the Havana Business Improvement District, which includes the Havana Motor Mile as part of their branding for the Havana Street to promote auto-oriented businesses along Havana Street. Uh, this project, uh, complies with all the criteria of approval for a conditional use for following reasons: the application is consistent with the applicable, uh, unified development ordinance standards. Furthermore, it's compliant with the use-specific standards for automobile and light truck sales and rental. It's, uh, the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan, uh, city corridor place type, the size, scale, height, density, traffic impacts, and hours of operation of the project are compatible with the surrounding commercial uses in the area. And the proposal will not change the predominant character of the area and is not directly adjacent to any nearby residential uses. This is, and then lastly, there is adequate capacity with city infrastructure to serve the proposed development, and no property improvements are needed to serve the proposed use. In conclusion, staff recommends to approve with three conditions: the conditional use for a automobile and light truck sales and rental use in the mixed-use corridor zone district, because the proposal complies with the requirements of Code Section 146-5 dot 4 dot 3 dot A dot 3 of the Unified Development Ordinance for the following reasons that are listed on the screen. And then, the approval is subject to the conditions that the applicant shall comply with the operations outlined in the Letter of Introduction of Record. Significant changes to the business operations may be approved administratively if the changes do not establish a new use or expansion of the use that is not permitted by zoning. And the applicant shall submit an approved highway access permit from Colorado Department of Transportation. And then, the applicant shall submit for a site plan amendment to capture the landscape improvements per the Havana Street Overlay. Thank you, everyone, for listening. This is the conclusion of my presentation. The applicant and I are available for questions.
Thank you very much, Ani, for the presentation. I'll open the floor for questions from the Commission. Okay, questions for the applicant? Okay, Stephanie, do we have any members of the public signed up to speak on 8A?
Uh, yes, Chair, we do have one member of the public signed up to speak, and Arnie Schultz. Um, Arnie, if you'll allow me one moment, I will allow you to unmute yourself.
Okay.
If you could please state your name, um, you would have three minutes to speak, and if you're a Aurora resident.
Okay. Chair Walls and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Ani Schultz, and I'm an Aurora resident and serve as the referral contact for the Village East Neighborhood Association, Vena. Our Board of Directors has reviewed this development application and is opposed. We object to development applications such as this one that seek to eliminate sites that benefit the area by providing restaurant choices, such as Dozens in this case, and the former Sam's number three. We realize that Church's Chicken and Carl's Jr. are in the area. However, they are fast food businesses that do not provide the opportunity for an enjoyable eating experience. The vast majority of our customers order from their drive-up windows. We need to replace restaurants such as Dozens that do provide an enjoyable sit-down eating experience, uh, such as Dozens does and as Sam's number three did. There were plethora of used and new car dealerships, gas stations, convenience stores, car washes in the area of this location, but very few places to eat such as Dozens and Sam's number three. As I, also, as I wrote to Chair Walls, the packet for this agenda item states the applicant plans to have 19 spaces for customer parking, seven spaces for employee parking, and 16 places for vehicle inventory, which exceeds the minimum requirements. However, it does not state how many ADA parking spaces they are required to have, and how many they are planning to have. The number of ADA parking spaces is also not included in the applicant's operations plan. The number of ADA parking spaces is not, also, is not included in Exhibit A on page 20 of your packet for this agenda item. Therefore, we do not know if they meet the minimum requirement for ADA parking spaces. These are the reasons that the Village East Neighborhood Association's Board of Directors have for opposing this development application. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Ani. Um, before I open the floor for Commission questions, I'd like to have staff address the concerns related to the parking requirements.
Yeah, so, this project is going to have 49 parking spaces. And so, with that in mind, any project that has 50 or less parking spaces is required to have two parking spaces, or two ADA parking spaces. There is already existing two ADA parking spaces on the site. And then, on Exhibit E, or Exhibit E, Exhibit D, which I can pull up now if you would like, um, it is a site plan that's to be used as reference only. There are two ADA parking spaces referred to on that as well. Um, yeah, if there's any other questions, please let me know. I'm happy to provide more information.
Thank you. I'll open the floor for questions from the Commission. Okay, seeing none, Stephanie, do we have another member of the public signed up to speak, or just Ani?
Just Ani. No, Chair, we do not have any other speakers.
Great, thank you. A final opportunity for any questions from the Commission and the applicant or staff. Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the public hearing and entertain a motion on Agenda Item 8A. Commissioner Banka.
Uh, bear with me here, sorry. All right. Regarding, um, Agenda Item 8A, um, auto king conditional use, based on the staff recommendation, the presentation and discussions at this evening's public hearing, I move to approve with, uh, with three conditions: the conditional use of an automobile and light truck sales and rental use in the mixed-use corridor and new dash C Zone District, because the proposal complies with the requirements of Code Section 146-5 dot 4 dot 3 dot A dot 3 of the Unified Development Ordinance for the reasons stated in the staff report. The approval is subject to the following conditions: number one, the applicant shall substantially comply with the operations outlined in the Letter of Introduction of Records. Significant changes to business operations may be approved administratively if the changes do not establish a new use or expansion of a use that is not permitted by zoning. Number two, the applicant shall obtain an approved highway access permit from the Colorado Department of Transportation. And number three, the applicant shall submit a site plan amendment to capture landscape improvements per the Havana Street Overlay requirement. And I so move.
Thank you, Commissioner Banka. It's been moved to approve Agenda Item 8A. Do I have a second?
I saw a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bush. It's been moved in seconded to approve 8A. I'll open the floor for discussion on the motion. Okay, without discussion, I will call the question. Commissioner Jacek.
Approve.
Commissioner Bush.
Approve.
Commissioner Geyser.
Approve.
Commissioner Riley.
I approve.
Commissioner Banka.
Approve.
Commissioner Hogan.
Approve.
And Commissioner Walls will abstain. Uh, 8A is approved with six votes to approve. Moving on to Agenda Item 8B, which is the, uh, first we'll record for the minutes, uh, site visits by the Commission. Commissioner Jacek, Commissioner Banka, Commissioner Riley, Commissioner Geyser, Commissioner Hogan, Commissioner Bush, and Commissioner Walls. Uh, Agenda Item 8B is the De Bressalem Mede N'Alam. I'm sorry if I butchered that. I promise I'm not being culturally insensitive, uh, which is also known as the Savior of the World Church, uh, which is a site plan located in Ward 2. Our case manager this evening again is Ani Karabashian. The applicant is DD M U O T C. Ani, the floor is yours.
Thank you. All right, so, the, uh, request for this project is that the applicant is requesting the approval of a site plan for a place of worship. The location is, uh, the northwest corner of East Sixth Avenue and North Ventura Street. The applicant is De Bressalem Ethiopian Orthodox Church. The consultant is Galloway and Company. Uh, the project is located in I-1 Zone District. The overlay is Buckley Airport Influence, uh, District, and the place type is Innovation Campus. Uh, the subject site is located within the I-1 Zone District. The properties surrounding the site are also within the I-1 Zone District as well. And the white box highlights the location of the site. The site is surrounded by a variety of industrial uses from the north, east, and west. Just to highlight a couple landmarks to orient yourself. Uh, directly across Sixth Avenue is the Buckley Space Force Base. And then, to the northwest is the Memorial Park. The subject site is 4.4 acres in size and is currently vacant. And then, this is a site photo where you're facing north from Ventura Street. And then, this site photo is a view of the southern property line along Sixth Avenue facing west. And then, these are two site photos of just the public notice signs that were posted. In terms of community response, four adjacent property owners and nine registered neighborhood organizations were notified. A neighborhood meeting was not held. A notice of hearing boards and mailings were posted and sent, and no comments were received when the notice of hearing boards are posted. Uh, site improvements and building architecture were the two items discussed during development review. In terms of site improvements, the overall proposal consists of the following: three structures, uh, including a worship facility, a main hall, an accessory structure called the Bethlehem, uh, 175 parking spaces, uh, which include six ADA parking spaces, which conform to the code requirements for a place of worship, a detached sidewalk with curtside landscaping along Sixth Avenue and Ventura Street, landscaping around the property's perimeter and parking areas, and internally to the site that meets city standards and requirements in the U D O. The landscape areas on, on the picture on the screen are highlighted in green. There are two vehicle accesses off of Ventura, highlighted by the orange arrows. And then, there are roadway design improvements along Ventura Street and Sixth Avenue. There are two outdoor courtyard areas, and then, uh, sight lighting that is distributed throughout the site. In terms of building architecture, uh, during the review process, the applicant worked, uh, with city staff to comply with the building design standards from Code Section 146-4.8 in the Unified Development Ordinance to ensure that all buildings had quality, foresighted architecture, articulation, and appropriate building materials. I do want to note, that's important, uh, it's important to note that the applicant requested the main building entry, um, to the worship facility be located on the west facade for religious purposes, and that staff accommodated this request. Uh, the approval criteria that apply to this project are the major site plan criteria of approval that are listed out on the screen. The project complies with all the approval criteria, including a few I'd like to highlight, which are: the application complies with the Unified Development Ordinance; the city's infrastructure and public improvements have adequate capacity to serve the proposed development; and the applicant has included in their plan to improve the right-of-way uh, along Sixth Avenue and Ventura Street, uh, with detached sidewalks and the roadway design improvements on Sixth Avenue and Ventura Street. The application also, uh, improves multimodal connections with the adjacent sites as well. With the approval criteria in mind, staff finds that Agenda Item 8B to approve the site plan with one condition, because the proposal complies with the requirements of Code Section 146-5 uh, dot 4 dot 3 dot B dot 2 for the following reasons listed on the screen, and that approval to be subject to the following conditions: that the resolution of outstanding technical issues, including C-dot coordination and final approval prior to recordation of the site plan, milers, and issuance of any building permits. That is the conclusion of my presentation. Thank you, everyone, for listening, and I'm available, or the applicant and I are available for any questions as well.
Great, thank you, Ani. Uh, I will open up the floor for questions from the Commission. Okay, and the applicant has a presentation or is just available for questions? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Hogan, did you have a question?
I do. I have a quick question. It appeared, in looking at the three separate buildings, that, and if you can show the site plan, I can't remember really quickly which. The bottom line of my question is, one of the buildings were not connected to the other. And I was just curious as to why, um, I was curious as to why.
Yeah, I can, I can pull up the, the arc, the, the site plan, and then I can have the applicant kind of answer those questions. I know they have the architect on, on the call. So, let me pull that up here. So, what might be users? Let's look at the site plan first. Are you talking about Building A and Building C?
I think so. You know, the smaller building, A and uh, B, I think, were connected. It was C and A. And I couldn't tell if it was like a little porch thing that connected them. It just appeared that people would have to walk outside, and I just, I was curious as to why, more than anything, or maybe they are connected, and I'm just not seeing that.
Yeah, so, I can, I can let the applicant speak, but I can let you, I can answer in this way where, yes, the building C, right here, this is the, uh, main hall, the community building, and Building A, they are not connected. And actually, all three buildings are not connected physically. Um, they're all, this, this, I can see why you think it's connected, but this is actually like a separate building. But I can have, um, the applicant speak more to that. But yeah, this is not connected to the building, even though it kind of looks like it is.
Yes, and I saw clearly, you know, the different uses, but I was curious as to why.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to find a better visual.
In the interest of time, do we have the applicant available to answer the question, someone from Galloway?
Uh, my name is Abby. I'm the architect working on this project. I can answer that question.
Perfect. Please state your full name, and, uh, optionally, you can state whether or not you're an Aurora resident.
My name is Abby DeJenny. I'm, uh, uh, one of the architects working on this project. I am not, uh, from Aurora. Let me go ahead and answer the question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, the three buildings you're seeing there, uh, the small one up at the plant north, uh, has only served, uh, maybe a couple of hours a week. And that is for the priest to prepare, uh, the sacrament that, uh, they need to present to the church. So, uh, out of the church uses, probably used maybe 30 minutes of the time. But for religion purpose, it needs to be separated, and only the priest go in there and, uh, uh, do his prayers and come out. So, usually, when the church is closed, uh, people go there and just do their own prayers without, uh, going inside the building. And Mr. Malak was also here, so he's more the knowledgeable inside the church if you needed further, further answers. But the two other buildings, the sanctuary and the community building, is connected underground, on the basement.
Oh, okay, interesting. All right, that answered my question.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Okay, and then, I'm sorry, we got interrupted earlier. Does the applicant have a presentation or just available for questions?
Just available for questions.
Okay, any questions of the applicant from the Commission? Okay, seeing none, Stephanie, do we have any members of the public sign up to speak on 8B?
No Chair, we do not.
Okay, final opportunity for questions if you happen to think of something. No, okay, at this time I'll close this portion of the public hearing on 8B and entertain a motion.
Commissioner Geiser.
Commissioner Geiser, go ahead.
Agenda Item 8B, Major Site Plan Criteria for Approval. Based on the staff recommendations and the presentations and discussions at this evening's public hearing. I move to approve with one condition, the site plan because the proposal complies with the requirements of Code Section 146 dash five dot four dot three dot B dot two of Unified Development Ordinance for the reasons stated in the staff report. Approval to be subject to the following criteria. Resolution of outstanding technical issues, including C dot coordination and final approval. Prior to recordation of the site plan milars and issuance of any building permits.
Great, thank you Commissioner Geiser. It's been moved to approve Agenda Item 8B. Is there a second?
Hogan seconds.
Thank you Commissioner Hogan. It's been moved and seconded to approve 8B. I'll open the floor for discussion on the motion. Commissioner Geiser.
Yeah, as a former Lutheran minister, I appreciate the diversity in Aurora. And I welcome the Savior of the church to Aurora.
Thank you Commissioner Geiser. Further discussion on 8B? Seeing none, I'll call the role, Commissioner Jacek.
Approve.
Commissioner Bush?
Approve.
Commissioner Geiser?
Approve.
Commissioner Riley?
I approve.
Commissioner Banker?
Approve.
Commissioner Hogan?
Approve.
And Commissioner Walls also votes to approve. Agenda Item 8B is approved with seven votes. Moving on to Agenda Item 8C, recording for the minute, site visits by the Commissioner Jacek, Commissioner Banker, Commissioner Riley, Commissioner Geiser, Commissioner Hogan and Commissioner Bush. Agenda Item 8C is the Metro Center P A, B three, B four and B six. Site plan with adjustments located in Ward three. Our case manager this evening is Ariana Muka. The applicant Wood Partners, Ariana, the floor is yours.
Thank you Commissioners, I am Ariana Muka. I will be presenting for staff tonight. For you, for your review is a market rate multifamily site plan application. Before you tonight is a proposed site plan with two. There we go. Before you tonight is the site plan with two major adjustments to allow for the development of four multifamily residential buildings. Parking and outdoor amenities spaces. The applicant is Wood Partners. The property is 8.17 acres and is within the M U T O D or Mixed Use Transit Oriented Development Zone District. Here is a vicinity map to show you the parcel located just east of the Aurora Metro R T D rail line and south of the Aurora Municipal Center. Here is a more zoomed in aerial view showing the property outlined dashed in red. The site is located by multiple properties that have come through Planning Commission. Both the Legacy and Cairoi multifamilies are under construction. The Summit View multifamily is a senior affordable and is located southwest to the site and Sprouts is open and directly north. Here is a zoning map to show the overall site and its relation to the surrounding zoning. The site is zoned M U T O D, that Mixed Use Transit Oriented Development District. To the north and south is a continuation, to the west of the site is M U R Mixed Use Regional. And then to the east is M U C Mixed Use Corridor. Here is a site photo of the vacant land. Seven adjacent property owners and 25 registered neighborhood organizations were notified of the application. No comments were received during the review of the application, therefore no neighborhood meeting was held. The major issues discussed throughout the review process included consistency with the master plan, site layout, compact parking and adjustments. The proposed site plan is located in Planning Area B three, B four and B six of the Metro Center Master Plan. Which was approved at Planning Commission in 2021. According to the master plan, B three and B four are designated for mixed use development. While P A B six is designated for multifamily mixed use. The proposed development provides a total of 365 units, which achieves an overall density of approximately 44 dwelling units per acre. This density is consistent with the Metro Center's master plan vision for a high intensity transit oriented urban corridor. In earlier meetings, staff emphasized the importance of establishing a strong streetscape alongside South Granby Street. The Metro Center Master Plan identified South Granby as a primary street frontage envisioned as an enhanced pedestrian corridor. Known as the Granby Promenade. In response, the applicant worked with staff to revise the site layout to better align with the vision by orienting to front South Granby Street. With surface parking located behind the structures, the master plan also called for a small urban park along South Granby Street on parcels B three and B four. Those are highlighted in green. Featuring elements such as passive recreation, lawn, public art and communal gathering spaces. In addition to the urban parks, the site includes a pool area, shouted outdoor gathering spaces, private balconies and patios. These features are intentionally distributed to enhance accessibility and encourage resident interaction. And it creates a cohesive and livable community for the residents. The proposed development includes 365 dwelling units, which requires a total of 383 parking spaces. In accordance with the U D O, 310 spaces for residents and 73 for guests. The site plan provides a total of 430 parking spaces, including 360 onsite spaces and 70 on-street spaces designated for guest parking. While the site includes an abundance of parking, a portion of the onsite spaces are proposed as compact. Per the U D O, up to 10% of the required parking spaces in mixed use districts may be compact, representing approximately 4% of the required parking. As such, this adjustment qualifies as minor and is approved administratively. Staff supports this adjustment as it allowed for a more efficient site layout and responded to the goals of Metro Center. Accommodating existing utility constraints and aligns with the operational needs for the proposed residential development. The site plan has two major adjustment requests and one minor adjustment request from the city of Aurora's U D O. The first adjustment relates to the parking lot frontage along an arterial street. Section 146 dash four dot six dot five dot A dot two. Requires no more than 25% of the lot frontage on an arterial or collector street to a depth of 60 feet shall be occupied by surface parking. The remaining 75% of the lot shall be occupied by a structure and non-surface parking should be located between the building and the street. The site's eastern edge has numerous existing utility constraints, including a high pressure gas line that impedes both building frontage and street trees. As an alternative, the applicant has designed an abundance of landscape material above and beyond code requirement to screen the parking lot from South Chambers Road. The second major adjustment pertains to the minimum masonry requirement for multifamily buildings. Which requires 80% of the facade to be clad in a combination of stucco and brick or stucco and stone. The applicant is requesting a reduction in masonry across all four buildings. Each building will have a minimum of 25% brick. The buildings will be a mix of bricks, mentions panels, board and bat and glazing. To mitigate the reduction, the applicant has committed to increasing the public art budget to incorporate large scale murals on select building elevations. These artistic enhancements are intended to activate the public realm, add visual interest and break up the building massing. Following collaboration on architectural refinement and after reviewing the durability and precedent used of the proposed material in local projects. Staff finds the adjustment acceptable and supports the request. I wanted to share some of the rendered 3D drawings done by the applicant team. These renderings are not required by planning and these drawings that were included in your architecture exhibit highlight how the building will work with the extra public art in the activated street frontage. These renderings are conceptual, but it gives a great idea on how these buildings will look. This is the approval criteria for major site plans in the U D O on the screen before you. The proposed site plan complies with the approved criteria for the following reasons. With the exception of the two requested major adjustments. It is consistent with the applicable U D O standards. It enhances the existing city infrastructure and improves multimodal connectivity within the development. And it's compatible with the surrounding land uses of higher density residential. Staff finds that the site plan meets the approval criteria because it's consistent with the applicable U D O standards and the Metro Center Master Plan. Approval should be subject to the resolving technical issues prior to the recordation and issuance of building permits. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions and other representatives from the city are here as well. The consultants do have a presentation and they're available to answer questions.
Great, thank you Ariana. I will open the floor for questions from the commission or staff. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the applicant presentation. You'll have 10 minutes to present. Please state your name for the record and optionally you can state whether or not you are an Aurora resident.
Daniel Braswell, Norris Design. I am not Aurora resident. I want to thank Ariana for her presentation. Good evening Commissioners, I'm Daniel Braswell with Norris Design here representing the applicant Wood Partners. This is my first time appearing before the Planning Commission, but I've been closely involved with Metro Center since 2019. When we began developing the Metro Center Master Plan. I spent the past several years working behind the scenes as a part of the Metro Center team. Helping shape the vision and direction of this transformation, transformative project. Tonight, I'm excited to present the newest project, which we are calling Wood Partners at Metro Center. Located on parcels B three, B four and B six within Metro Center. Like to introduce the development team. The developer applicant is Wood Partners, a national development firm with a strong local presence. Dedicated to creating distinctive communities with a lasting impact. Wood Partners currently manages over 70 properties across more than 20 cities. Planning and landscape architecture is led by Norris Design, civil engineering by Ware Malcolm, architecture by B V H. Photometric design by Belfay Engineering and the public art plan in conjunction with Nine Dot Arts. Here's our context map. Our site is located within parcel B. On the eastern edge of Metro Center, just south of the recently opened Sprouts and east of the legacy Cairoi and Dominion developments, which are all currently under construction. This project will revitalize three vacant parcels into a vibrant transit connected multifamilies community in the city center area of Aurora. Will add 365 apartments near the Aurora Metro Center light rail station and bus hubs. Reducing car traffic and boosting local businesses. By transforming an empty block into a lively and safe and economically active neighborhood. The plan supports Aurora's vision for a dense, walkable, art infused development as outlined in the Metro Center Master Plan. Our project spans parcel B three, B four and B six. Featuring four four-story buildings, two small urban parks and a mix of surface covered and garage parking. Most ground level units will offer direct access to adjacent parks and streets. Encouraging spontaneous interaction and strengthening community ties. Parking is thoughtfully integrated behind residential buildings and screened from view with landscaping and garage structures. These garage structures will not only serve a functional purpose, but also contribute to the visual experience of the streetscape. The rear facades, which will face pedestrian pathways and public areas, will feature vibrant murals. Curated to reflect and celebrate local culture and creativity. This approach ensures that parking remains discreet while enhancing the aesthetic of the neighborhood. The community will offer both public and private amenities, including a private pool deck. Direct access to the park and public art woven throughout the site to create a vibrant and engaging environment. One of the most distinctive aspects of Wood Partners at Metro Center is the extensive public art plan curated in partnership with Nine Dot Arts. We're not just installing a sculpture or two. Art will be a defining feature of the entire development. Each of our four apartment buildings will serve as a canvas for large professionally painted murals. We will also install sculptures and interactive pieces throughout the site. In total, we're investing over a million dollars in public art, nearly doubling the city's minimum requirement. This commitment will result in iconic art that attracts visitors, inspires community pride and gives the city center area of Aurora a unique cultural identity. Our art plan not only meets the city's goals for place making and design quality, it exceeds them. Making Metro Center synonymous with art and creativity. Complementing the art, Metro Center will deliver two new public parks that enhance livability and strengthen community connection. Both located on the west and east sides of South Granby Street, which are within parcels B three and B four. These small urban parks span the length of a city block and form a key link in the Metro Center Master Plan's envisioned string of pearls, green space network. These parks were designed to meet the parks requirement for these three parcels set forth in the Metro Center Master Plan. Most ground units, ground level units will have direct access to these parks and adjacent streets. Encouraging everyday interaction and a seamless connection between the residents and public spaces. Each park includes amenities for all ages, grassy lawns for events, a children's playground and shaded plazas with seating and relaxation for relaxation and picnics. Designed as active social spaces, whether than decorative landscaping. The parks will be beautifully landscaped with trees, planting beds, seat walls and art elements. This integration of nature, play and public art directly enhances quality of life and fulfills the central goal of the Metro Center Master Plan. Creating a vibrant, inclusive and pedestrian friendly urban district. As a part of the site plan, we're requesting two major zoning adjustments. Each adjustment has been carefully considered to uphold the city's intent and deliver a better outcome for the community. Major adjustment one. To allow surface parking to occupy up to 75% of the lot frontage within a depth of 60 feet. Current code limits parking frontage within 60 feet of arterials to no more than 25%. On the eastern edge of parcel B four along South Chambers Road. A high pressure gas pipeline easement and several other existing storming utility easements run underground. Due to safety and easement restrictions, we cannot build structures within this area, limiting our options to surface parking. We understand the concern, so we've designed thoughtful mitigation strategies to offset the impact. We're adding a landscape buffer along Chambers Road with turf, shrubs and a low masonry wall approximately three feet high. This wall will incorporate public art, transforming an otherwise inactive edge into a welcoming streetscape element. Major adjustment two. Aurora's Unified Development Ordinance requires that multifamily exteriors include either 60% brick or stone or 80% when combining brickstone with stucco. Our proposed design incorporates brick with cementitious panels. Although cementitious panels are permitted by code, they cannot be included in the masonry coverage calculation. As a result, we are requesting an adjustment. Initially, our request reflected a reduction of up to 53%. However, upon refining our calculations, we realized that windows had been mistakenly included in net facade. After correcting this, the actual reduction required is approximately 40% rather than the originally estimated 53%. The cementitious panels are well suited to Colorado's climate, offer long-term durability and are backed by a 30-year warranty. Their use contributes to a resilient building envelope and supports the distinctive architectural identity for Metro Center. This design approach allows us to create a visually engaging and memorable community. Set of uniformed brick walls, the buildings will feature varied textures and large murals that bring energy and character to the streetscape. Brick accents will be thoughtfully placed, especially at the base and around entrances to convey permanence and quality. In exchange, we're doubling our public art investment in integrating it directly into the building design. We've worked closely with planning staff to demonstrate that our selected materials meet the city's goals for durability, design excellence and place making. The result will be four distinct art enhanced buildings that contribute positively to the urban fabric and reflect Aurora's vision for a vibrant Metro Center. Combined with our nearly $1.1 million art commitment. This adjustment supports a high quality culturally rich development that the community can be proud of. In closing, this project delivers much needed housing next to transit, activates the city center with new energy and reflects Aurora's vision for a walkable, artful and well-designed Metro Center. By approving our site plan with adjustments, you'll help bring a community focused development to life. One that Aurora can be proud of. one that Aurora can be proud of. We respectfully ask for your support and thank you for your time and consideration. Our team is available to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you for the presentation, Daniel. I'll open the floor for questions from the commission. Okay, seeing none. Stephanie, do we have any members of the public signed up to speak on 8C?
No, Chair, we do not.
Okay, the final opportunity for questions from the commission. Okay, without any questions, I will close this portion of the public hearing on 8C and entertain a motion. Commissioner Hogan, I think you're muted if you-
Oh, I was muted. Yeah, do you want me to take this?
Sure. Commissioner Banka's already had one tonight, so go ahead.
All right. Related to 8C, site plan with adjustments. Based on the staff recommendation, the presentation, and discussion at this evening's public hearing, I move to approve with one condition. The site plan with two major adjustments for parking lot frontage and building masonry requirements because the proposal complies with the requirements of section 146-5.4.3.2 of the UDO for the reasons stated in the staff report. Approval to be subject to the following condition. One, resolution of outstanding technical issues prior to the recordation of the site plan miles and the issuance of any building permit.
Great, thank you Commissioner Hogan. It's been moved to approve. Agenda item 8C is their second.
It's our second.
Thank you Commissioner Bush. It's been moved and seconded to approve 8C. I'll open the floor for discussion on the motion to approve. Without discussion, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Jacek.
Approve.
Commissioner Bush.
Approve.
Commissioner Geiser.
Approve.
Commissioner Riley. Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Banka. Commissioner Hogan.
Approve.
And Commissioner Walls also votes to approve. 8C is approved with seven votes to approve. Okay, Stephanie, do we have any members of the public signed up to speak on non-agenda items?
No, Chair, we do not.
Okay, I'll open the floor for members of the commission for any miscellaneous items of business or any announcements.
I do have a question I need to ask this of council. Upcoming agenda item on the Green Valley Ranch East Site Plan number 17. I live in this community where that is taking effect. I'm also a member of the Community Advisory Council, and these are some issues that we are looking at. I don't believe there's a conflict of interest. I needed to bring that up because it's right behind me and we are a growing community and we do deal with Clayton Properties on the community development here. So I just wanted to bring that up to make sure that I was good in any participation.
Okay, and I'll defer to our city attorney. You're also welcome to take it offline for further follow-up, but Lena, we'll defer to you.
Yeah, I would say Commissioner Riley, if you could reach out to me directly and we can have a discussion offline, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Send me an email and we can set up a meeting time.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Banka.
Yes. And I guess it's an appropriate question. I'll find out here. So on Monday night, the council overruled our quick pick, quick pick, quick of the quick gas station that was at Parker and Havana. And with the discussion that went on on that, you know, I guess my question is, is it not appropriate for us to mention the fact that there were 11 gas stations within a mile? And I'm not sure who this question's geared to, but I got the sense from council that as long as it meets the UDO in section 146, that we're supposed to rubber stamp it and not ask a question about it. And I just am curious, is that, is that true? You know, are we not supposed to consider the fact that there's all these other gas stations right in that area? I guess that would be my question, you know, because it sounded like we were, you know, the gas station met all of the criteria. And so it was not appropriate for us to turn it down.
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Banka. I'll first defer to Brandon and then Janine as necessary.
Yeah, I'll, I mean, it's a conditional use and conditional use has subjective criteria associated with it. And with subjective criteria, there's the potential of different opinions about those criteria. And, and I think that's a way of looking at it. So it's not wrong to have different opinions about the criteria, but and that's why we have the public process to go through that. So that's probably an oversimplification, but you know, it's probably something we can talk about, you know, maybe at a study session and how to make those decisions more robust or how to just talk about it because there are always tough, tough situations for, for folks to be involved with all the way around, whether they be the public who are concerned about their neighborhoods, the applicants concerned about their investment, staff's in a tough position, planning commission's in a tough position. So it's a stressful situation and so we all try to do our best in those situations.
Great, thank you.
Chair, if I may.
You may.
Janine Rustad, Director of Planning and Business Development. I'll add to that. The questions you may ask, but I went back and reread the minutes for this just to refresh my memory. Tie things back to the criteria. When you have your deliberations, that's the most crucial point to get it on the record that, you know, based on criteria of consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, here's my opinion. Or here, somehow phrase it that way. And as Brandon said, we are happy to give additional training on this because it is the criteria. You know, sometimes you'll ask questions, let's say on a residential multifamily, what are the rents going to be? That's probably not the best question. That's more policy. You know, does it meet the height, the setbacks, the consistent with the surrounding neighborhood was, which is really your catch-all.
Great, thank you.
Okay, further questions? Commissioner Hogan.
I too have to say I was disappointed. More in the interaction, how this was presented. I think that I don't fault the process. I don't fault the questions. I don't even fault the council disagreed with planning commission. What I would hope, however, the next time is when asked a direct question by council to staff on why did planning commission deny this? I would hope that staff would say that criteria, their minutes, their notes, their comments are in your packet. Please refer to the packet. What I saw staff do was and that was hurtful because I felt like I was caught in a family argument and they just kind of didn't regard me as a commissioner because I do think that we went to the effort to do exactly what you said. And Janine, we could have done that better. I, I'm not saying we did it perfect. But if, if that is a situation again, and frankly, it could have possibly been with King's Auto, that staff would say, "Council, we provided this. All in your packet. You need to read it." And, and I get where you're not going to say, "And you need to read it." But those notes were provided in the packet. Because I got some frankly very negative comments from council following that meeting about how dare you, planning commission.
And that's where let us work together. So in the deliberate, your questions of the applicant of staff are one thing, but the deliberations, and again, I went back and read what was in the packet. And that basis wasn't there. So let's work together to make sure, and I thought I still had it up and I have 20 tabs open, but we want to work with you so that you have a very strong record, whether it's a neighbor that appeals, the applicant, so that we can say on page 476 of your backup and be very specific like that.
Okay, thank you.
Further items of miscellaneous business? Seeing none, we'll move on to our planning division manager report.
Very good, thank you Chair. Brandon Camerata, planning manager. Quick highlight of some projects that were administratively approved over the last couple of weeks. Of some interest actually, probably. The Aurora Highlands kind of has a unique neighborhood park allowance where they put the, one of the neighborhood parks in one of the big medians there on Aurora Parkway. And so we went through one of the first entitlements of one of those park areas. Another one of interest, Himalaya Road Extension. So that's in Majestic Commerce Center. Kind of an important north-south corridor connecting 32nd to 38th there. You know, 38th now has an interchange connected to it as well. So kind of getting over the railroad tracks there and making that last leap to hopefully 38th. Another project occurring in there as well, Project Frontier along 32nd. So kind of in the older area of Majestic Commerce Center, filling in one of the smaller sites. And lastly, Pomeroy Commercial. And so that is the kind of residential with a little bit of commercial just north of the the Southlands Mall area. And so it's kind of a the pad sites then on the east side of Aurora Parkway are filling out. You'll, there's pad sites on the other side. I think there was a gas station, maybe a car wash or something there as well. So those are the projects approved over the last couple of weeks. We already covered city council actions. Cottages still pending. We're still waiting to review their resubmital on the cottages project, which was which council is waiting on a site plan to come back through planning commission effectively. So that's still a number of weeks out. That's my update. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Commissioner Banka.
I don't know that the, this is not specific to that, but that east off of Quincy and Parker Road, that apartment building that was going in there, you know, Quincy and Parker, and I know we had a lot of public that was not real happy about it. I'm just curious, what is, what is happening with that? I mean, it looks like it's all vacant. It doesn't look like, you know, I've been over there a couple of times. It doesn't look like anything's moved. Can we get an update on that or is that okay for me to ask?
Certainly okay for you to ask. I don't have where, where they are in terms of, I mean, they're gone through our entitlement process. And so they, they may be at the whims of, of market pressures and this, that, and the other. So, you know, I don't know where they are necessarily in their final process, but certainly they did make it through our entitlement process.
Great, thank you.
Further questions of Brandon? Okay, I'll move on to our city attorney report.
Hello, good evening Chair and commission members. My report this evening is just to let you all know that I am working on your request from the last meeting to review the procedures or the parliamentary procedures that you all follow. I have looked through the code and through the council's rules, and I do not see anything that requires boards and commissions to follow the same parliamentary procedures as council. So my next step is to move forward and make sure that I'm not missing anything there and then prepare some proposed bylaws, changes for you all to review and then some proposed parliamentary procedures and see what you all would like to use and where you'd like to go from there. Luckily, as I'm sure I've mentioned in the past, you all are allowed to amend your bylaws without requiring council approval of those changes. So we should be able to do that internally among the board. So I just wanted to give you guys all an update on that. So I am working and moving forward with that. You are on mute, Chair.
Perfect, thank you so much for that, Lena. I'll start. My first question is, does the city attorney's office provide any training to council members as it relates to code section 146 or similar training or workshops that the planning commission receives?
I have provided quasi-judicial training, but as far as training on the UDO, I'm not aware of any.
Further questions for Lena? Okay, final opportunity for any announcements before we adjourn. Commissioner Hogan.
Yes, just a reminder to planning commission that we do have our fire chief and our police chief getting reports and study sessions. So that's always joyful listening to what's going on from a public safety aspect in our city. Secondly, regarding the study sessions, because believe it or not, we're winding down our year for study sessions. September, we've got the comp plan, transportation plan. And I know that they want to have this because it's kind of their last loop in following up on this. But in October, Brandon, I do want to make sure that we have the ability to have some discussion and training from either you, Janine, or Lena regarding aspects that we just talked about and making sure that we know all the quote-unquote tricks of the trade so that we can indeed have proper instruction in situations like we had prior to last Monday night. So I'd like that to be a priority for the October meeting because again, we're winding down our study sessions, but I think that that would be very helpful, very encouraging. And just to talk through some of these different aspects of being a commissioner, being a council member, and being a staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Hogan. Director Rustad?
Thank you, Chair. Just a little update on connecting Aurora, the transportation, multimodal transportation master plan. We have extended the deadline for our target for adoption until early next year, probably the March-April timeframe. We needed to slow things down because we're getting into the policies and programs, the final reports, and wanted to be more thoughtful, make sure everything gets vetted internally with the public, with you all. So we're happy to come when scheduled with that, but we can also postpone if we want to prioritize training, or we can come multiple times.
I'm glad you brought that up. I did have a follow-up question because we had asked, I remember we asked Wee Long and Mac to come back as soon as, or I think at least when the interactive site had launched. And so that was my question, is the interactive site live? And could we potentially, when, when they do come, assuming that we do have them come, walk us through that a bit?
So interactive sites. I know we're talking about having a data dashboard that will coincide with the city's strategic master plan. That may be even after adoption.
Okay. There, there was something, they specifically referred to it, and I can't remember exactly the language they used, but there was some sort of, maybe that's it, but they did mention something and we specifically asked them when they do come back. Hopefully that would be ready or we could go through that.
Yeah, we don't- Yeah, we don't have the city-wide strategic plan up. We're doing some test running in the background with staff, learning how to use, Invisio is the, the company, the tool that we're using, and it takes some getting used to.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, thank you. Final announcements? Commissioner Hogan.
I forgot. Can I do one more, please? And it's really a personal privilege. Our Korean War Memorial was funded by Adams County Open Space on Tuesdays. So we're very happy to work and to, to have that happen in Melvin's Ward, Ward One. So he's going to get a brand-new Korean War Memorial. We will be breaking ground on that on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. It also passed through study session on Monday evening and through the historic preservation on Tuesday evening. So it's been a gangbuster rollout, but most of all, we have a real-life certificate says you get six hundred and thirty-five thousand and fifty dollars for this. So yippee-ki-yay.
That's great.
Congratulations.
Okay, final announcements? Commissioner Hogan? Going once? Okay, seeing no further announcements, I move, we adjourn this evening's meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, take care.